Start recording.
Okay. And I will call the October 15th of the Maggie Walker Governor's School Regional Board to order. And Ms. Marshall, if you would do a roll call of who is here, please?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm going to go down by division. So we start with Charles City, Mr. Page. Not here. Dr. Joppy. I think she's here. I think she's on mute. Is that, did you do that, Dr. Lowery?
I did not, but I can ask her to unmute. She is, she is on the call. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, from Chesterfield, Ms. Bailey. Bailey's not here. Dr. Dougherty. Dr. Dougherty's not here. From Goochlin, Mr. Wright.
I'm here.
Dr. Rayly.
Here.
From Hanover, Mr. Axel. Mr. Axel's not here. Dr. Gill.
Present.
From Henrico, Ms. Ogburn.
Here.
Dr. Cashwell.
Present.
Thank you. From Hopewell, Ms. Highslop.
Here.
Dr. Hackney.
This is Jay McLean here for Dr. Hackney.
Thank you. King and Queen, Ms. Hall.
Here.
Dr. Carter. Dr. Carter's not here.
She's on another Zoom.
Thank you. We can't. Ms. Barber.
Present.
Mr. Nichols. Mr. Nichols. Thank you. From Petersburg, Mr. Pritchett.
Here.
Uh, Dr. Petrie Martin. Dr. Petrie Martin. She's not here. Powhatan, Mrs. Ayers.
Here.
Dr. Jones.
He's supposed to be here. He must be running late.
Okay. Prince George, Ms. Andrews.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Pantikoff.
Here.
Thank you. From Richmond, Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Camrus.
Designee, Lynn Plevich.
Thank you. We have a call on Madam Chairman.
That is great. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, Ms. Marshall, Ms. Bailey has just entered the room.
Thank you.
Let me get back to our agenda real quick. Madam Chair, I think the next item is approval of the agenda and then the approval of the minutes.
Okay. And I'm toggling back and forth as well, um, between, so I can hopefully be a step ahead. Um, can I, Board Members, you've had a chance to review the agenda for today's meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. And Mr. Wright, would you like to second? Thank you, Mr. Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. And we also have the minutes. I'm looking, hold on one second. We have the minutes from our September 17th Executive School Board meeting that you've had an opportunity to review. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A move. We approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. And if, as you make a motion, if you could identify yourself, that would be great. I can't see everybody. So, thank you, Ms. Barber. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. And Dr. Lowery, we do have a recognition, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have a recognition that sort of came in at the last minute. And niche.com, which is one of the entities out there that is tied to real estate, and they provide information for folks that are looking at buying property, houses about the schools in their district. Uh, and niche.com has rated Maggie Walker as the number two best public high school in Virginia. They also rated us as the number two, if you can be able to pop out of this here. Ah, if you think by now, I know. They also rated us the number two best college prep high school in Virginia. And the, the one that I'm particularly proud of is that they ranked Maggie Walker as the number one best public high school teachers in Virginia. And the metric they use has to do with the education of the staff, the professional development, the endorsements. So we have the, what they measure out as the best public high school in Virginia in terms of the teachers. And I think that is a really, that's, that's the accolade I think that I'm, I'm proudest of, is how outstanding our staff is. And we, we know they're good, but now we have some data to support that they are being rated as the best in Virginia. So that's the recognition that we have, Madam Chair.
That's awesome. Okay. Yeah. Board Members, we had some public comments that were submitted. And if you, you were sent those yesterday, and just for transparency, we're going to do a roll call check to be sure that everyone received those public comments. So Ms. Marshall, if you could run down the list of board members and check and be sure that everyone has received those public comments. We're not going to take the time to read them aloud, but they are posted and they are part of our minutes. Um, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank those that contributed to our public comment this time. So Ms. Marshall, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Page from Charles City is absent. Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Axel, did you, absent. Ms. Ogburn?
Yes.
Ms. Highslop? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchett? Mr. Pritchett? Mr. Pritchett?
Yes.
Did you receive the minutes?
Yes.
I mean, comments? Sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes, I have the comments.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm scrolling through them here for the video so that everyone can certainly read them.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Axel did just send me a quick note that he should be signed on momentarily, so if you could include him in future votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Lowery, thank you for sharing the public comments. And now we'll go to the Director's Report.
All righty. My Director's Report was submitted for, for the review of the Board as well as for the record. I will just kind of bring out some of the highlights. The first of which is that we did receive about $78,000 from the CARES Act and wanted to bring that to the Board's attention. I know that a statement came out from the Governor yesterday about releasing additional funds. I don't know where we are in that, but we've got some Governor's School Directors that are looking into that as we speak. Some of the early morning emails that I received today. But we did receive $78,000 from the CARES Act. We were able to use that to buy quite a bit of personal protective equipment in anticipation of an eventual return of students. We certainly don't know when that'll be right now, but we did use that money as it was intended to stock up on things like hand sanitizer, face shields, face masks, sanitation wipes, things like that, to be able to keep the school clean. We also used some of that money for staff development to be able to get ourselves into a position where we could go to a virtual online model. We used some of that money to buy equipment to facilitate that, particularly for some of our students who didn't have internet access that was stable. We were able to help them out with that a little bit, which was helpful. And then we also used some of the money to be able to provide onsite childcare for school-aged children of teachers that are teaching here from the school. So we've got the Dragon Academy downstairs, and it averages between eight and 12, sometimes as high as 13, students who are able to work in a supervised environment and receive their online instruction from their home districts. And that allows our teachers and counselors and staff to be able to work for the benefit of our community without having to worry about their own children being unsupervised or having to stay at home with them. So that's actually worked out very, very well. We were grateful to be able to have those funds. It is the front edge of the budget season, and we are getting to start working on our budget plan. With the Superintendent's about some projections. And so we are doing a town hall budget development virtual meeting on December 8th that will be in a Zoom format. We will send out, you know, multiple communications and links and such, so that people can participate in that town hall development as we start to figure out the FY '22 budget. I will say that as it currently stands right now, the state is indicating that their part of the contribution will remain flat, which is, you know, certainly going to put us in a little bit of a tougher spot, but we will, we will work on that as we get a little bit further into the process. In terms of our recruitment, we have begun recruitment season. I was on a Zoom call on Monday night, which I believe it was, I think it was Prince George County, had done theirs virtually. Some of your districts are doing them virtually. Some of them are just posting information on websites, and some of them are doing them in person, and we are working to meet everybody's needs. We've put together a narrated PowerPoint that we have sent out to all of the gifted coordinators that they can use if they're doing something in a virtual environment, as well as a video by students and a one-page sort of fact sheet that they can use as well. So, um, I have a person here that is writing on our agenda, so I am going to have to remove them. I apologize. Okay, it's a feature of Zoom I was unaware of. So the recruitment is underway right now, and we're able to get out there to the, to the people that need to see us, as well as having abilities to be able to send material out as well. We are having our information sessions. They're not going to be on campus, but we're going to do a virtual model. Normally, we would do those over three nights in November, but we are going to go ahead and do those virtually this year as well, and there'll be information coming out on that very shortly. We did get our first round of National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, and I've listed them there, as well as the districts that they are from. So we're always excited to have that happen, and we gave the PSAT yesterday. So we'll see what we yield for the next time around. There is going to be a virtual Honor Society induction that will be held in mid-October. Final date is to be determined. I believe it's next Wednesday, is the, the, the date that that's going to be. So we are able to continue to move forward with our, with our clubs and societies and try to keep them as, as operational as we can, given the nature of what we're doing right now. As you certainly picked up by now, Fall Festival is postponed, and we are hoping to be able to do it in the spring. The Governor's School Foundation has a new executive director. It's Ms. Ginger O'Neil. I believe she's on the call with us now, so congratulations. And we are excited to have you take that position. I've worked with Ginger now for three years on a variety of projects, and I think she's going to be wonderful in that role. We have updated our school profile, and you can click on that on your Board packages to be able to see it. It's identified sort of the situation that we had last spring in terms of COVID and what some of those realities for our kids were like. So that will be sent off to colleges as they apply. And then we did get the, the AP results back from College Board. We administered 1,254 exams, and we had 465 students scoring 91% or higher, 91% scoring a three or higher. Now, multiple before, it's 465 students that took multiple exams, so some of them took three, four, five exams, some of them took one. But the bottom line is that 465 of our kids earned a rating on one, one or more of their tests that allowed them to be able to get some college credit if their college awards that. So we are happy to be able to report that as well. And I believe that is the extent of my comments.
Sorry, I was muted. Any questions for Dr. Lowery? Okay, we will move on. Um, I don't think we have any unfinished business that anyone has brought forward.
Let me see if I can just get to the next slide here. There we go.
But we do have an update on the strategic plan.
We do. Little quickly, just back on the Director's Report. Your Superintendents and gifted coordinators, I believe, have been emailed the commitment letters for next year, so that, if you haven't seen it, look for an email from Barbara Marshall that has a PDF where we can start to figure out what our enrollment will be for next year. Yes, we have. I did want to provide a brief report on the strategic plan. We have established a strategic plan implementation team that is made up of teachers, students, and we've got some alumni involved and some parents. And basically, they're going to be the sort of enforcers to make sure that our strategic plan is implemented in a timely fashion. But we've had our first meeting, we've divided up the plan and assigned who is responsible for each of those sections, as well as a timeline. So we are sort of in the early phases of implementation, but we have put in place a framework to be able to track the implementation of the plan. And this is going to be a standing agenda item for both the School Board as well as the, the Executive Board, so that we will report monthly, and we will have a document to be able to provide to you that'll sort of be a checklist of where we are on each one of the items as we start to roll forward and what the timeline is on accomplishing that. So I know that a lot of effort was put into the strategic plan, and I wanted to assure the Board and our community of stakeholders that we are now in the process of implementing the plan. And we've brought together, I believe, a very good diverse set of voices to be able to help us do that. So I just wanted to kind of bring up a quick update that we were in the process now, and we've established a team to actually put the plan that was approved last time into action, and we're, we're pretty excited about that.
That is a, a great update, Dr. Lowery. Any questions for Dr. Lowery on the strategic plan implementation? Um, I thought I would add, if you don't mind, Dr. Lowery, just part of that is that Dr. Lowery and Ms. Barber and I participated in a Zoom call with a group of alumni, which I think has led to some of that, that implementation and including the alumni on this planning committee, I, I think is awesome. And having this as a standing agenda item, I think it, it's kind of like we've talked about this. So now this is putting a plan into action, and we're actually, you know, it's not just words, it's, it's getting something done. So thank you for all your work on that.
You're welcome. The next items are consent items. We do not have any personnel items for this month that need to be addressed. So that just leaves the revenue, the transaction, budget versus obligations, and donation reports. The Finance Committee did meet last week and went over all of these items, which are available for your view, and didn't have any issues with them, so we can take these whole items in as a block.
Okay.
Dr. Lowery?
Yes.
There was one personnel item. You didn't scroll down far enough. It's a retirement request.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're, you're right. You're right. So we did have one, one personnel item, Zona Hicks, who is our registrar. She put in for retirement back in the spring. That's why I missed it. She put in for retirement back in the spring, but when COVID hit and realized that there was no place to travel the way she wanted to travel, she decided to withdraw that, and she's going to retire for sure at the end of December. She will be missed, but certainly well deserved. So we do have one retirement, I'm sorry, that I did need to present. So that goes in with the consent items.
All right, Board Members, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved. Scott Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Is there a second?
This is Ms. Barber. I second.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Ms. Bar, Ms. Marshall, I don't think we need to do, do we need to do a roll call vote for that one?
No.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And the next, we do have some action items today. Um, and Dr. Lowery, if you'll talk about the policy procedures, this is quite a long list.
Yes, I'm going to just, well, I'll start at the top. I'm obviously not going to mention each one. But you, what you'll see is that the, almost every single one of these were amended policies based on the Virginia School Board Association's recommendations. There were only a couple ones that were new. One, just regulation regarding authorization of school facilities. The other is a national motto that we need to display. Remediation Recovery Program, we don't really do here, but we put it in as policy in the event that we do have a situation where a student comes to us in ninth grade and requires remediation recovery of an SOL test. But as you can see, the vast majority, there are a couple technical ones, educational materials for school bus drivers to provide them with materials, regulation regarding expense and travel reimbursements. Again, those are just accounting procedures to keep us in bounds. But lots and lots and lots of amended items. Regulation regarding the distribution of excess food items, because of the nature of our contract with a food provider, we don't really have that currently, because what she does with her food that she doesn't sell to us is really not our, we don't, we don't have control over that. However, we put it in there because in the event that we do end up eventually someday, maybe providing our own food, we want to have that policy in there. The other policies down there, again, are mostly financial ones. Compensation reimbursement, new regulations pertaining to those supplemental pay disposal surplus items. Changing the, the requirements for private carriers for student transportation. And then standards for student conduct violations and consequences. Student removal form reports of missing children, preparing for student suspension or expulsion. These are new policies that came out of the SBA that we've adopted for our school. They're not, they're not a Maggie Walker-specific policies that we created. And that's all of it. So as you can see, there's enormous amount of policies. Nothing, nothing is really new or controversial in terms of something that would be unusual as much as just the SBA recommendations based on their summer policy, I just, I don't know, with the white word, policy dump, but when they send you literally dozens and dozens and dozens of updated policies, we did update our policy manual to match the VSB's recommendations. So Madam Chair, I think we can, we can't vote on these as a total block, but I think we can break them down into sections, if that's what I was understanding from our conversation the other day.
Right, I think so. So what I'd like to do before we, does anyone have any questions about any of these policies? Because what we're going to do is just take section by section and do a vote as a block of that section. So before we do that, though, this is an enormous number of policies. Does anyone have any questions about any of those, want to discuss?
Madam Chair, John Axel.
Welcome back, Mr. Axel.
Oh, it's good to be back.
I'm so glad you're enjoying the beat.
Oh, yeah. Ms. Marshall blocked me on several attempts to get in, so, but I, I finally got through the firewall. But if, if you would, I believe Ms. Ayers is on that committee that reviews all these policies. I was wondering if you could ask her to explain each one in detail.
Absolutely. Ms. Ayers is muted, though, so I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that.
Forgive me, but hey, see, I come back in and I cause problems already, so, sorry, Madam Chairman.
Good stuff out of you, Mr. Axel.
I thought she might like it. Oh, I'm sorry, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. Dr. Lowery, while, um, for, pause just one second. We have someone in the waiting room who's tried to get in.
I thought, I thought I got him in there. It's, um, it's, uh, Mr. Daughtry from Chesterfield.
Right.
I think I've brought him in.
Oh, so wasn't Ms. Marshall?
All righty, so, and so no one has any questions? I'm going to admit him. I think I can do that.
There we go.
Yeah, okay. There we go. All right, any, no questions about any of these policies? Okay, so we're going to take him as a block. We'll start with foundations first. I am, hold on one second. I'm going to my other screen. All right, we'll start with foundations first. Can I have a motion for approval of the policies on foundations?
This is Ms. Barber. I'm going to approve the foundations.
And I will second that. That's John Wright.
Thank you, Ms. Barber and Mr. Wright. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. And Ms. Marshall, we're not going to do a roll call.
Okay.
Okay. All right, School Board Governance. Can I have a motion to approve the block of policies on School Board Governance?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the policies for School Board Governance.
Thank you.
Ms. Highslop, second.
Who was that, Ms. Ayers? I'm not sure. Who was the second?
Linda Highslop.
Thank you, Linda. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next will be our administration policies. Can I have a motion to approve the administration policies?
So moved. This is Harwood Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Is there a second?
This is Ms. Barber. I second.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a number of instruction policies. Can I have a motion to approve the instruction policies?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Is second?
Second, Mr. Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have Student Services. Could I have a motion to approve the policies on Student Services?
This is Ms. Barber. I move we approve the policies on Student Services.
And do we have a second?
A second, Ms. Hall.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And then there is a long list of Human Resources Policies, some of which are new. Want to be sure there are no questions on this group? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Policies?
So moved, Mr. Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett.
I'll second that, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any question? I'm sorry, any opposition? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to Community Relations. That block. Can I have a motion to approve the Community Relations Policies?
So moved, Madam Chairman, John Axel.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Hall.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now you know why we're not doing these individually. We have a block of Finance and Operations Policies. Can I have a motion to approve that block of policies?
So moved, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Mr. Barlow's second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And that, I think, is the end of all.
We have one, one more, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Almost there.
Oh, okay, sorry. And then we have a block on Student Conduct. Is there a motion to approve the block of policies on Student Conduct?
So moved, Mr. Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That is approval of our policies. And I want to thank Ms. Ayers and the Policy Committee. That is a tremendous amount of work to get the policies updated.
Okay, Madam Chair, I do have one other item that I'm requesting a waiver on first read, and I will explain the, the reason for that and what we're trying to do. In our admissions policy for the, for the school, under the Regulation 1030-R1, it required it requires us to have an onsite assessment for our potential students that are eighth graders, and these are the two tests that we give in January. It's usually the last weekend in January and the first weekend in February, about that time. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, I don't see it as a safe or feasible thing to do to be able to bring 600 students plus an additional probably 75 to 100 adults to be here to be able to administer that test. It is a very, very crowded day with eighth grade students that are all over the building. And for us to be able to do it safely, we would have to literally break this group up into probably somewhere between eight and 10 weeks. And then also have to pay an awful lot more for proctors to give the tests over eight to 10 weeks. We are requesting that the board waive this requirement for the class of 2025, which would be this year's eighth graders. I will also say for the record that we, the planning committee, would like to replace this assessment with something else. We do not believe that it is the best indicator for student success at Maggie Walker. But prior to asking the board to remove it permanently, we want to be able to present to the board what we would see as a replacement for that assessment. Right now, that assessment, I believe, counts about 35% of the final composite score. And just asking to remove it for good without any replacement, I don't think is prudent. I want to do this in the right way and, and put in a different way to assess our students' success rates. We ran some numbers, some preliminary numbers on what it would look like if we removed the assessment. And it has very little impact on students in terms of their ability to be here, but it does act as a barrier for some. Not that I particularly want to follow TJ's model on things because they're a very different school, but TJ recently in Fairfax County had voted to remove their assessment test, which they were actually charging students $100 to take. So what we are asking the board to do is to, two things, to waive first read and then to allow us to not have the assessment for this year and allow us the time to be able to look at an option to put something else in its place that would help us provide good indication to measure a student's success and then bring that back to the board with the hope of being able to eliminate the test altogether. But in the in the interim time, we, we just certainly can't give it in January. So those are, those are the requests that the planning committee has asked me to bring to the school board. And of course, the planning committee, for those who might not know, is made up of all of the gift coordinators from each of our 12 supporting districts, and that was brought up as a unanimous request. All 12 are on board with making this request to the school.
Okay, Dr. Lowry, if we could go away from you sharing your screen with you so we can see more people. I think that might help because I have, we're gonna have some conversation about this. And this is the thing I was referring to. If you have, you know, give me a thumbs up or a raise your hand and I'll call each person individually, but I do have before we start that discussion, Dr. Lowry, I'm getting to fill in some blanks for some folks. There, I have had a couple people ask if we do this, so I thought we would just review real quickly for everyone the piece of the puzzle of admissions that, that Maggie Walker plays. For example, there's the admissions test. What else does Maggie Walker actually require of applicants that is universal to all districts?
Universal to all districts right now, it's, it's pretty simple requirement. The student who's applying must reside in one of our participating districts. And that can certainly be public school or private school. They must have at least a B average through seventh and eighth grade. So we take a look at the seventh grade classes and eighth grade classes, and we're looking to have at least a B average, which it would be a 3.0. And then they also have to be either enrolled in Algebra I or have taken Algebra I prior to arriving at Maggie Walker. So for most districts, Algebra I is now the default eighth grade class. But they need to have those three things, and those are the minimum requirements that are out there for students to be eligible to attend Maggie Walker. Now, in addition to that, there's of course the application, which I believe every district does. They ask for letters of recommendation from, I believe, two teachers, and I believe that every district does that. And some of the districts require a personal statement from the students, some of them do not. When they would come to campus, they would take that assessment, which is made up of two things. It's part of it is an actual multiple choice assessment. And then they would also provide a writing sample that is usually geared towards a very open-ended writing. I can sort of give a prompt from the past, something along the lines of, you know, do you believe that every American should be required to vote? And it's just more of them being able to present a thought and an argument and defend it. It's not, the, the writing prompt is not a summative assessment on knowledge they already have as much as it is, just their ability to communicate. And that's why I feel it's important that if we do remove the test, that we want to be able to put things in place, writing, you know, some sort of a writing sample, perhaps some sort of an essay that the students can do, because removing all of that together would basically leave the districts right now with the application, a review of their transcripts, a review of the rigor of their eighth grade classes, their teacher recommendations, and that's all they would have to work with. So we want to be able to provide them something beyond just that. We just want to make sure that we do it right. And yeah, just to clarify a little bit on the, the test, it's a two-part test. Part of it is aptitude and part of it is achievement. And that's really the, the, the challenge with this, with this test is the issue of the achievement test versus the aptitude test. You know, that that's sort of, I think that's probably been a barrier based upon where a kid may be coming from and the experiences that they've had. So that's, that's kind of all of that. All of those items are melted together to provide a composite score. And that composite score ranges from 100 down to, I guess theoretically, one. What we have found through research here at the school is that if a student has a 74 or higher on that composite score, they will be successful at Maggie Walker, and we measured success for the purpose of this study as graduating on time with at least a 3.5 grade point average, which I would consider to be successful at Maggie Walker. So students who have at least a 74 composite are, are able to do that. And what we have found also is that the number one indicator of student success at Maggie Walker is the degree of rigor that they took in middle school and how they did in those classes. That's the, the measure of success. The aptitude test and the achievement test, there's not a real strong correlation between success at Maggie Walker and those tests.
Okay, and Dr. Lowry, one more question before I open it up, because I did have the question of where did the test come from? Was this a purchased item or was this something that, okay, that's what.
Yeah, it is. It is a, it is a purchased item. We, we spend about $25,000 a year of our budget on administering scoring and dealing with those assessments. So it is, it is a, a standardized purchased item.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'll open it up for questions for Dr. Lowry. Obviously, the planning committee has met, so if anyone has any questions or would like to discuss the implications of, first of all, we're gonna talk about you know, waiving the test this year. So let, any discussion on that?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Axel.
Have we given the option to the students on whether they wish to waive or take the test virtually or whether they would prefer to take the test face to face?
There isn't really an option to give the test virtually. It's a, it's a paper test.
And they can't make it electronic?
I, I don't know that they're able to do that. I, I can certainly research that, but I don't know that they're able to do that off the top of my head. I, I have not seen that as an option.
Please do, because I would be, I'd be shocked if you couldn't take a document and make an electronic document.
We just, we just gave the PSAT yesterday, and we were in communication with the college board as to whether or not they could make the PSAT online, and they told us they would not do that. So I don't know if this company is similar to them, but it's college board is not doing, they did their AP test online last year. I don't believe they intend to do that again.
And again, that, that's, that's right, that's choice rather than technology, and that's, that's, yeah, I would, I would, I would tend, what's worked well in every division, everybody, we're doing it, what has worked really well for us is offering the option to our community and to our children. And because we find when they select the option, they're happy with it. So you, you cut down on complaints quite a bit. So if we could do it, if we could do it virtually as well as face to face, and the students and parents, the option of selecting which one, I think that would probably be the best option. That is, of course, some of you may know that option as far as reopening school. It's been quite successful for us. And had quite a bit of approval from the community on both subjects, whether they wanted virtual, whether they wanted face to face. But I, I am concerned about waiving it. It does, at, at first glance, it bothers me because as we go to further discussions about waiving it, totally, I have some questions and, and concerns regarding that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. Dr. Lowry, quick question, and then I'm gonna call on Mr. Wright.
Mr. Barlow also had his hand up too. I don't know. Same time.
Yeah, I actually am not seeing it, so.
He might be on page two.
No, he's right. It's weird, I'm not seeing it. But anyway, I will ask a quick question. Has any consideration or thought been given to allowing each district to administer them, the test themselves as opposed to bringing kids together at Maggie Walker? Because it could be done in various sites across each county or something like that. It's a a test that, for example, we could have three test sites in Henrico. Students could go, it could be in small numbers, but has any consideration been done for that?
That, that was not something that the planning committee members they, I, I don't recall a detailed discussion about that. I don't, I don't think that was something they wanted to do, but it, it's we, we've been trying to do that for a while before in the past, getting districts to do the test locally. And there has been a, a pretty strong amount of resistance to that. So that's, that's not something that was, I think, discussed in detail on this.
Okay, all right, Mr. Barbara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Lowry, thanks a lot for bringing this concern to our attention. I, I support waiving the test requirement this year. It, it does sound like there are potential workarounds, whether that be through online methods or having the districts doing these tests onsite, but to be frank, I think it, it does present some real administrative challenges. Not only for our team at Maggie Walker, but for our, for our school districts, and certainly even if we were able to administer or get the test administered online, I, I think that raises a multitude of challenges with respect to security and ensuring quality internet access for every student and things of that nature. So particularly in light of the fact that it, it seems that while this data may be helpful, the, the academic rigor and performance of our students in middle school is the strongest indicator. And we are in the midst of this pandemic. I'm supportive of, of waiving the test this year and look forward to further discussion about what the admissions process looks like with respect to testing moving forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barlow. Mr. Wright?
Well, actually, my question was exactly the same as Mrs. Ogden's. So, but it leads to a follow-up, which was, Dr. Lowry, you mentioned that there had been some resistance to local hosting of the admissions test. So if, if we have one in the future, would that be something that would be on the, on the table, or was the resistance actually from our own staff who are making these recommendations?
It, it would be from your own staff. The, the concern, I think I could summarize it, and again, there are a few people on the call here that are on that committee with me, so if I'm wrong, put something in the chat. But one of the concerns was just the issue of everybody having the same testing circumstances and there being consistency across how the test was administered. And that, that they felt that Maggie Walker with the system we had in place was better equipped to be able to control and keep a very consistent testing environment so that everybody was taking the test at the same time, at the same, under the same circumstances, on the same days. And that, that, if I recall correctly, and that was a discussion that was about a year ago, but if I recall correctly, that was the fundamental, at that point in time, that was the fundamental resistance was from the districts not wanting to, to take on that out of the interest of, of consistency.
Okay. Anyone else?
I got me again.
Follow up?
Me again, if no one else.
No, absolutely. Go right ahead.
How long have we administered these tests?
I would, I don't have an, certainly since I've been here, that's not the best answer, but Dr. Ellis, could you maybe chime in on that if you know how long this has been going on?
Yeah, I mean, to my knowledge, this is my 11th year here. To my knowledge, the test has been part of the process the entire time that Maggie Walker has been here. It's been one of the components. There have been, we initially had, my understanding is there was initially an aptitude test, which we still have and rotate, we don't have the same test actually every year. We've rotated periodically to ensure confidentiality. Then the evaluation committee of the governor's schools recommended, because it was a school for government and international studies, that we add in a social studies achievement test. So we have that as well, although there's certainly been discussion that that particular test really depends an awful lot on when the students are, have that material presented. Some school districts, they are on math reading block and don't do social studies until after the kids have the opportunity to even apply. So I mean, you didn't ask my opinion, so I won't give it on that one, but, but yeah, it's been, it's been given quite a bit, but we also changed the percentage of how much that, that counts. We've changed the percentage, the, we, meaning the planning committee, has changed the ratio of how much the writing is worth, how much the recommendations are worth, and how much the testing is worth, and how much the analysis of the transcripts are worth. That has varied over time just based on the experiences of the planning committee and of Maggie Walker personnel of, of how successful that is in providing providing a, a good assessment of student success at Maggie Walker. And as Dr. Lowry has indicated that we can see from the data that we can see from the data that a student's experiences and their success in middle school is, and the rigor of the courses that they've taken in middle school are the greatest indicators of their success at Maggie Walker, and that would be what would be left if we did not do the testing or the writing, because those are what we administer here, those would be the components that are left.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to know how long we were giving it. Now, Ms. Ayers, I'm gonna pick at you, if I may, Madam Chairman, because Ms. Ayers Ms. Ayers has been here longer than me. As far as I can remember, we've always administered a I mean, I agree, Ms. Ellis, that we've been changing. I do recall calling, UVA sent the, I think it was three folks from Virginia one time to evaluate the total process and the test and so forth and so on. So it's, it's not something that hasn't been looked at and adjusted. I will, I will agree with that. But the, the concern I have, or one of the concerns I have, is it is a part. I mean, when you, when you test things, you don't take one thing, just like we've already done. You don't take one thing and make it 100% of reason. There are multiple parts to looking at it. And for the most part, it has been successful. Dr. Lowry and his staff and, and the previous staffs and directors of Maggie Walker have done well. I mean, because the majority of the students have done well. I mean, because the majority of the students are successful. There are still some that aren't, which you can't, you can't get them all. You try your best, but then, and it could be other circumstances at home or something that changes for the student, doesn't make them successful. But if, help, correct me if I'm wrong, the purposes, the purpose of all the admissions is to not only test the student, to see if they're capable to be successful, they are capable to be successful at the government school. We don't want to put the child through something that they fail at miserably. So you have to, if you wish to keep rigor, keep certain standards, I believe, anyway, you have to work hard to try to put children in that position that will succeed. And in doing so, you have to have some form or form of testing evaluation of some type to assure that we're selecting people that have a good chance of meeting the rigor and making it, being successful through the process. And Ms. Ogbon, I mean, I like your idea, if it's a, if it's a problem for the governor's school, I don't know why it would be a problem for the divisions. If we, you know, we could conduct the test in each division. If it came down to that, to make sure we conduct them. I like that idea.
Well, and I will offer another one. And I've thought about this a lot, is is it possible, and again, this would be something we would, we've kind of got two questions in front of us today. And that is, we've got to handle this year, which is a separate issue, and it's kind of all blending together. But I've wondered if we couldn't make the test in I don't know how we would do it this year, but possibly let each district handle their own test and make it optional for students, because some students are good test takers.
Rose? We'll be back, I hope.
I mean, that is an option. I guess, and that's the reason why my recommendation to the board is that we give us some time to work on this and present some options to the board in terms of if we were to replace the test, what we would replace it with. You know, I don't, I don't, we're not prepared to, I'm not prepared to participate in that discussion right now on any meaningful level because that really needs to be the direction of the Planning Committee. What I'm asking for today is to be able to get by for this year and be given a little bit of time to be able to explore some options, bring back some logical proposals, and then let the board decide what you would feel would be appropriate. I do think something needs to be there. I'm not, I am not in favor of eliminating the test and not replacing it with something else. But I would prefer, if at all possible, to have a little bit of time to be able to put together a set of options, not just one, but a set of different options for the boards to consider, the board to consider after we get through just this current situation that we're dealing with right now.
Well, and I think, I think we'll probably try, we'll probably confuse the two, or we keep wondering with the two instead of separating them. And I like, and Ms. Ogbon, I hope she comes back. I think Ms. Ogbon has given us the immediate solution to your immediate problem, which is this year. I think she's given us a solution by saying, okay, have each division give the test. And that that solves your problem. And that also, now you have time to focus on the long range plan, at least in my opinion, on saying, okay, now I have time to come back to you and say, here are some plans on removing the test or changing the test or whatever the options are. But if we're being hard pressed to do something now, I'm gonna be, I think Ms. Ogbon's giving you the answer. I mean, it's the divisions, of course, my superintendent may be getting ready to shoot me, but, you know, I think our divisions could pick that up easily. And I hope, I don't want to impose on all the divisions, but, you know, I think we could test our own children, then you give us a test and our people could test them. And I'll, who's who's vice chair these days?
Mickey's back.
I'm back. I lost internet there. All of a sudden, it just everything died. I'm sorry. But anyway, what I was, what I was gonna ask, is it possible to make this test, you know, the the writing sample this year a mandatory item, part of the application? Because if you take away the test and the writing sample, like you said, what you're left with is a 3.0 resident of your district, Algebra I, and then the districts themselves had a process. Then, you know, that's my only concern, is if we eliminate that part of the test, you don't even have a writing sample.
We, we, to answer your question, we certainly have the ability to have a writing sample be part of the application package that the students have. The only thing I would put out there to you, and I'm just being brutally honest, not totally sure who's writing that essay.
Right, right.
And that is, and that is a serious, a very serious concern. If we're gonna give weight to that essay as being part of the scoring, I can assure you that there will be, at a bare minimum, the student's work will be reviewed by somebody else in that house before they send it along.
Right, no.
In extreme cases, it could be worse than that.
So for just, for just this year, let's, let's take that separate for just a moment. So for just this year, you're proposing that we have a 3.0, you're resident of your district, you will have had Algebra I, and then from there, the districts will take up their process, which universally is an application to teacher recommendations and in all the districts, some personal statement. So is there anything proposed for this year to replace the test and the writing sample?
The Planning Committee was working on the idea of what you were just describing was some sort of a writing sample that would go with that. There was the same, some of the same arguments that we're hearing today were in the in the Planning Committee. There were members who were very concerned with the security of it. And there were other members that said, you know, we get the security issue, but what else are we supposed to do right now? I I am certainly not opposed at all to the idea of a writing sample being done, as long as it's weighted appropriately in the sense that we know that there's a very good chance that that work is not necessarily the students' independent work by themselves. That's that's a concern I would have on anything that we sent home, given the nature of some of the things that we've experienced.
Right. I'm gonna ask a just really off the top of my head question. Is it possible, and this is, I don't know, that Dr. Ellis and and others might be able to to weigh in, is it possible to use this format of where students in groups log in and it's essentially a proctored amount of time? Where you can see what they're doing, cameras are on, and they're able to, in the view of someone, write it and submit it right there. Obviously, they wouldn't be able to have anyone around them. They could submit it that way. And I know that's a logistics nightmare for that many kids, but that could be done at the district level, whatever. I I understand you're, you want to protect the integrity of that writing sample, absolutely. It's just like, how many of us as parents would admit how many projects we've done for our kids? There's no difference. And and so what can we do to protect the integrity of the writing sample and, but also make this open and equitable process? Because we have to do both.
Yeah.
We don't want to put any barriers in the way of kids applying.
I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, it's an excellent question. Excuse me, I think, you know, I I just don't know. I don't know how we do that beyond just having them submit a paper response. There's, there's equity issues with internet access. I mean, we, we worked really hard to get the 756 kids that we've already have here on campus to make sure that they had solid internet access. You know, I I don't know how we would begin to do that. It's an excellent question. I just don't know how to answer it.
Right. We'd have to do it within the districts. Mr. Axel, and then I'll go to Mr. Barlow.
Okay, I just, basically, I'm gonna go back to your original proposal. You don't have to, you may not have to do it by internet. Okay, if you give the option to the children in each district, each division, you can come to this school and we obey COVID-19 rules, six feet apart, wear a mask, you know, put small number of children in each room, however, whatever the guidelines are. And if you're comfortable with that, come take the test, and we have a employee of the division supervise it. So they, you know, you have your security because you have people there watching them take the test and write their paper. Okay, and if you, and again, I'll go back to the ones that's uncomfortable, then we can do, I think, oh, Mickey, what you said, Madam Chairman, is you can have technology where they can sit there and watch the child write the paper.
Right.
And the each division could set that up. Now, the toughest divisions that have, that have the, I would think, the biggest problem with that would be Richmond, Henrico, Chesterfield, Hanover. Your smaller divisions, and I don't mean this, you have fewer, don't mean this, but you have fewer students to test. So you, you probably have more flexibility and advantage over us who are testing many. But I do, I don't know, Mickey, I mean, Madam Chairman, I think you got it. I mean, it's male, security wise. I mean, the division provides the oversight. And if, you know, if they're uncomfortable taking it face to face, the division provides the technology to make sure they can. And so there's the, your concerns are eliminated. I mean, to me, it just, it answers the question.
Okay, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you. I'll be, I guess I'll be a little bit more frank now. I, I, I understand that we want to make sure that we're maintaining rigor here and that we are adequately assessing our students before they they come in. But we are in the middle of a pandemic. Some school districts have opened. Some school district students have better access to technology. I know that many students in RPS, there are Chromebook shortages. We've been trying very hard to get Chromebooks and support for our students and internet access for our students, but there are issues with the supply chain where many of our students are using tablets that are not that much bigger than a large cell phone. There are significant equity issues, I think, with requiring students to work from home, and I don't think to to fill out these types of essays. And I also don't think it's, it's worth, particularly for school districts that do not feel comfortable opening for in-person instruction yet. I don't think it's, it's worth it. I don't think Maggie Walker is going to go off the rails because we made exceptions to the admissions process for one year during a global pandemic. It's, it sounds to me like we can do an effective job of assessing the likelihood of success of our students based on their middle school performance and the rigor of their coursework. I think, Mr. Axel, you brought up a good point about some districts that may have a harder time administering this than others. I would count Richmond among them. We have transportation issues getting our students to and from school, even if we are going to be doing assessments. We are already using most of our transportation office for for food distribution. We've recently lost a member of our staff from the transportation office due to this virus. And I just, to be frank, I do not understand why it would be worth jumping through so many hoops, putting the administration of Maggie Walker and putting the administration of each school district feeding into the school division to make this assessment work when the administration here has reasonably said that they think that we can properly screen students and judge the potential for their academic success at Maggie Walker in this, in this one year. I really do have a hard time seeing a situation where we accept a multitude of students who are not qualified this year, and it puts Maggie Walker at a significant disadvantage or or significantly compromises the ability of Maggie Walker to perform a quality education, provide a quality education for our students.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barlow. What, who we haven't heard from is any of our superintendents. And if, as you've been listening to this conversation, if you have any thoughts on implementation, what this would do to your staff, how do you think your gifted coordinators would feel about this change for this year or in the future? I think we'd all be interested in hearing from from our superintendents if anyone's willing to go on the record.
Mrs. Ogbon, I have a comment.
Cashwell?
Thank you. You know, I certainly understand the challenge that Dr. Lowry has ahead of him related to this. And and so I think that as all school divisions are uniquely looking at rethinking any number of their processes, this one is is just as complex and challenging, but I think what he's proposing here makes sense. So on a number of levels. One, we've already heard from his staff and from him related to the fact that they'd already been looking at whether or not this test belonged as it is as part of the administration's process due to the fact that there are other factors that seem to be stronger indicators of of student success, and this test may in fact have been a barrier to being able to recruit and bring in students who will will ultimately be successful at Maggie Walker. So there's that piece. And then there's also the piece that we find ourselves in a situation with the pandemic where administration of this test could then potentially be inconsistent if given in any of the number of scenarios that have been put out. So certainly, if if districts were to take it on individually, if there was some sort of online administration, all of those scenarios may provide access to the test, but potentially introduce a whole nother layer of inequity when you think about the fact that there would be inherently a number of inconsistencies, either in the implementation method, or whether there would ultimately be access, given the challenges that each of the sending school divisions may have, as well as bandwidth and, you know, of staff, all the way down to individual student circumstances. So I have to wonder if introducing that scenario actually furthers Maggie Walker's mission of making sure they're, they're getting students who are best prepared for the program, or if it even just provides another layer that is ultimately not valuable, given the fact that we know there will be so many inconsistencies with a local administration of the of the test or an internet administration that that may have some, some drawbacks. So you know, based on what Dr. Lowry has shared and his staff regarding their recommendation to, given the current circumstances, remove that layer, knowing there are enough layers still in place that he and his team believe and the Planning Committee believe are strong indicators of whether or not a student can be successful in the program. I would, you know, support that idea.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell.
And this is Maria Petry Martin in Petersburg, and I definitely concur with Dr. Cashwell in support Dr. Lowry's recommendation. As I've sat here, and we're a small school system, I have thought of all the things that could go wrong in this, in this process. And it does give us the opportunity to take a step back and really determine what is the best direction as we move forward, because for me, it's a bigger question of the importance of that particular test or any test in the process. So to me, it's a bigger question. So it does give us time to dig into that and to determine truly where we want to go, since we have just been in the midst of this intense strategic planning process.
Dr. Petry Martin, I would be interested in what, what you're, in your, in your thinking, what could go wrong?
Well, I agree with Dr. Cashwell as far as if we use technology as an option. We know that we have issues daily just ensuring that our students are online receiving instruction. We have been very fortunate in Petersburg, and I do want to say that, and that our systems have worked. You know, as you were sitting there describing how someone could literally watch a student doing their writing assessment, we know that there are tools like Hapora and other tools, tech tools, that could make that happen. But that's all predicated on technology working and our students having access. And then I have to tell you, in the city of Petersburg, we are at the high risk category for transmission of COVID-19. So of course, that's always at the forefront of my thinking as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Dr. Gil?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, they, they say that the seven most dangerous words in business are sometimes the same seven most dangerous words in are sometimes the same seven most dangerous words in education, which are, uh, that's the way we've always done it. Um, and with that being said, there are also um, you know, tried and true methods that are tried and true for a reason. And so what I've heard here at the risk of being redundant is there is an opportunity here to go back and assess uh what the, the true correlation is. We see studies come out of, of different areas, even with, uh, with higher education. You have seen in recent years, um, a number of universities, even Ivy League, no longer require the, the SAT, the ACT. And so I think this does provide an opportunity to, um, you know, look long-term, and it, and it may very well be, and I, I truly don't know. I know we've heard anecdotally, but it does provide an opportunity to see, is there a correlate between um standardized testing? What is the correlate between all of the factors being used? And allow us to pause. My, my only comment, again, without, I think the points that have been made have been excellent. I, I would only add, if uh the determination is made to allow at the local level, uh, we, we have, you know, thirty-some people on this call, but each one of our divisions by state statute has a GT, a Gifted and Talented uh Committee. And so my only recommendation here would be if, and, and I, and I say if, not when, a determination was to, uh, to move to a local level, that we have a committee that we use to vet and bring recommendations to each board as opposed to us unilaterally making that decision. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Yes, this is Lisa Pennycock from Prince George. I would just like to-
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to share that I think it's important to, you know, possibly have a matrix of the assessments that are required and what it is that that assessment answers for the school. If the information is to be accessed in a different way, then maybe it's not needed. I, I guess I also think, we, we have a four days in-person uh instruction or model here with one day virtual for all students, and then the other option being virtual for any family that, that wanted to choose that. So we know this year when the SOLs are given, that we are going to need to have all children come onsite for those. So for me, if it's important to us, then we should do that. Because I don't think that you get the same outcome unless you are in a um in a protected site like that to have each person's work be authentically their own. Um, I think that if you don't need it, and there's no sense in, um, and you get the information in some other way, then that's fine, too. But I also thought Mr. Dr. Gill's point in taking those thoughts then back to the um school divisions Gifted and Talented Committee um is important. But I think the question is, what information do you get from it, and is it significant to you in, in moving forward? If there's another way to get it, maybe we don't need it. If there isn't, and maybe it's important, then we should consider having onsite assessments, just like we're going to do with the SOLs.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm not seeing any hands raised. I'll give you just a second to think. Okay, so we have a question before us, and that is, what do we do for this year? I don't think we've really reached a consensus that I could just say we've reached a consensus. Cause um, you know, we're, we're talking about a, a lot of different aspects of this. So what I would do is I would entertain a motion, if anyone has one, that they would like, uh, Dr. Lowry, the planning committee, have asked the regional board to approve uh waiving the admissions test for this year. So the question is, is anyone uh want to make that motion and uh we take a vote on it? Or if anyone else has a different way forward, I'll take a motion on that.
I move that we approve of the, of Dr. Lowry's, Lowry's recommendation that we uh waive the uh testing requirement for this year, given the, the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Was there a second? Uh, Mr. Wright, I'll take yours. Uh, Mr. Wright has seconded the motion. Ms. Marshall, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Mr. Page is absent. Ms. Bailey? Ms. Debbie Bailey?
I think she's out.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Axel?
No.
Ms. Ogburn?
Yes.
Ms. Highslop? Ms. Highslop?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchett?
He's frozen.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ayers?
I'm here, yes.
Was that a yes vote, Mr. Pritchett?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
We have eight yes and two no's.
Okay, thank you, board members. Uh, that motion carries. So, Dr. Lowry, so the, the consensus of the board is that for this year, the um the test requirement will be waived. And what I would ask is that you give us an update as soon as possible on what, what the new process will be, so that we can all be um aware and what's required by Maggie Walker, and um so that a student can apply. You know, what's the basic from Maggie Walker? And then um we can go from there. I would imagine that this discussion, I don't think we're um at the point where we're making a plan for the future, but I think from what you're telling us, the planning committee will be bringing something to us as a suggestion in the near future.
That is correct. Um, so we will, we will, at the next meeting, uh, we will certainly present what the planning committee is going to do in terms of this current year. And then I would say by um by late spring, early summer, we should, well, late spring, let's say late spring, we will have options to present to the board. So there will be plenty of time for public comment and such uh prior to the start of recruitment season for the class of twenty-six.
Right.
That doesn't make all of us feel a little old. I don't know what does, but the, we'll, we will make sure that we have plenty of time to have a good, robust discussion and some data to support the different recommendations uh that the planning committee has prior to starting.
And, and I would remind everyone, superintendents and board members, that the process that what we're talking about is what Maggie Walker requires of students. And then each individual district can create their own set of individual requirements. And that's what happens today, because um, for example, in Henrico, last year, we had over five hundred students apply. And we have a process within Henrico that we uh use to vet our students that are in addition to what Maggie Walker requires. And so, for example, I, I would suggest that you take this back to your boards. This is going to be a subject that is going to have to be approved by your board as well. And so I, I've been looking at what happened at TJ and what um, how they went through the process and what TJ, obviously TJ is a Fairfax County school, and the Fairfax County School Board had to approve that process, but we are different. And we have twelve, soon to be thirteen, different school divisions who have twelve different ways of getting kids into um the program. So I, I think this is the time that each board needs to have an examination of that application process, knowing that it may change on the Maggie Walker end. And um, so it would be interesting, I think, if um each of the gifted coordinators through the planning committee shared any feedback from your individual boards. And I think this needs to be an open line of communication between those people and Dr. Lowry and, and the planning committee, but also you as board members. So as we go down this road, we are all informed about changes at the local level. And there may be a school division who decides if in the future there is no test at the Maggie Walker level, wants to institute one at their local level. There's nothing to prevent that if that's the way the individual board would want to go. So I, I think that's um an interesting takeaway from today, but if anybody else has any comment on that before we move on, um we will, any other discussion on this or any of what's coming? Okay, thank you very much. Robust discussion, much appreciated.
Certainly. Madam Chair, the next item for um discussion, it says for first read, but it's not so much, there's no proposal with this, it's more of an item for discussion. Um, but as the, uh, several of you um are kind of in the process now of exploring how you're going to bring students back to campus full-time, some of you have, have had students on campus full-time, you know, we're kind of left in sort of a, an awkward position of having twelve different districts that are sort of doing at least five or six different approaches to bringing students back. As you know, we are really one hundred percent dependent upon pupil transportation uh from your districts to be able to bring students here. And we've heard from some districts that have said it's not a problem. We've heard some districts say that's not really going to be an option until we bring our kids back. And then some districts who are really struggling to be able to bring their kids back with the number of buses that they have in a safe manner. And adding, you know, the buses to bring our kids here would be a challenge for them as well. So I guess what I'm sort of asking, and the superintendent's had a really good discussion with this this morning, is just sort of a, a, a general thought process on the appropriateness as to when we would really start to look at bringing our students back. And just a couple of things to consider. Uh, you know, we're a regional school, so we've got a footprint that's, that's quite a bit bigger than anybody's local thing. And certainly what's, what's good for Petersburg might not be what's good for King and Queen or Hanover and so on and so forth. But we're left kind of sort of thread in the middle, and there's obviously a very large piece of equity that goes with all of this. Um, you know, if certain districts are able to, if we open up and certain districts are able to provide transportation, certain ones aren't. Or if we, you know, we, any model we would use would certainly allow students to be able to continue on in a virtual environment if they chose to do so. But if the reason they chose to do that was because they had no way of getting to the school because their district wasn't providing transportation, is that an equitable situation in comparison to others? So it's incredibly complicated. I don't know that there is a answer, but I wanted to at least give the board the opportunity to discuss the issue a little bit. Um, because as you can imagine, I have uh, uh, many parents and families that are, that, you know, "Good morning, how are you doing? Good to see you. Thanks for everything you do. When are we coming back?" Um, and, you know, up until now, my answer's always been, "Well, you know, we'll, we'll have to wait and see." But as they're starting to see their brothers and sisters maybe going back in different capacities, it is creating a little stress on some of the families. So, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would just like to open it up for discussion here with the board thinks about this.
Absolutely. Thoughts, anyone? Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and um I'd like to thank Dr. Lowry uh in particular and his staff, because um we're all really struggling with how to answer these challenging questions, but and, and of course, there are many stakeholders to keep in mind, but uh, most of us in the day-to-day operation of our school system don't have thirteen different, or twelve, it's going to be thirteen different districts feeding into it with board members from each district with different approaches, different effect, infection rates, uh, different um uh risk issues uh in, in various communities. So I know it's been a particularly, particularly challenging to, to nail down what an appropriate approach is for, for Maggie Walker. Um, but in, in some of the conversations that we've had in Richmond uh on the issue, and, and I forwarded some of these concerns to Dr. Lowry as well. Um, we, we are not in a position where we can provide pupil transportation to students at Maggie Walker. Um, and, and we do think that that, that presents an equity issue um in one respect, because uh, we are not providing, or we're not going to be um not going to be returning for in-person instruction, at least until the uh, the upcoming semester in, in the spring. And um, and we would prefer to have a uniform approach with respect to Richmond students who are returning to school. Um, one of the pressures on us, as I mentioned in the earlier discussion related to pupil transportation, is that we do have a significant proportion of students who who are uh um living below the poverty line, and uh we've had to, to go through extraordinary efforts to uh provide um nutritional services for those students. So many of our um transportation staff members and our buses are utilized to uh to provide meals for our students throughout the district on a daily basis. Um, on top of that, as I mentioned earlier, we have had infections in our transportation office, so that's another area of concern um for us. Uh, we, as I mentioned earlier, we did have a, a staff death this past Friday, and we have a number of other infections as well. Um, as uh, as the superintendent from Petersburg noted with respect to uh their student population, we do have a student population and their families that are at higher risk. Um, it's no secret that the um African-American community and Latin, Latino community in Richmond have had significantly higher infection rates than many of our uh, many folks throughout the, uh, through the region. Uh, so we've been particularly sensitive to that issue. It also appears that um COVID rates are ticking up, uh, at least in Richmond, and I believe throughout the Richmond, uh, throughout the region in the Commonwealth. Um, my, my girlfriend, this is sort of anecdotal, my girlfriend's a, a nurse who's been treating a lot of COVID patients since March, and they've had the um, the highest level of COVID patients in, at VCU than they have in, in well over a month. Um, so I think these are all things that we should um consider on top of the administrative challenges and strain that I know that Dr. Lowry and his staff are going through, trying to um finagle approach that makes the most sense for, for all of the, the districts. Um, so my hope is um, in addition to also keeping in mind that this is, uh, seems to me this is the approach that the uh Appomattox Regional Governor School took, uh, would be to hold off on any in-person, a resumption of in-person uh classes at Maggie Walker until at least the start of the next semester. My impression is that Appomattox will be reconvening to make a decision in December, and I think that would be an appropriate time for, for us as a collective body to uh to weigh in and make that determination. And I also think that um, no matter what we do, we, we should be taking a look at a couple of of policies that I think are, are appropriate, um, and that my colleagues on the board have deemed appropriate, because we did have this discussion. Uh, one, of course, and I think um Mr. Axel alluded to this earlier, which is an important one, which is the ability for um students to make a determination about whether they're comfortable to return. Uh, but I also believe that staff should be afforded the um, that, that same opportunity uh with or without a medical excuse, because um, because this is high risk for some folks, this is higher risk for some families than others. Uh, many of our um staff I know in RPS, and I'm sure in, at Maggie Walker, have um different types of environments that they're, they're dealing with at home, and they feel that there are different levels of risks um associated with uh a return for in-person instruction. Um, so I, I think that's something that we should be um considering as well, moving forward. And then lastly, I think um this kind of goes without saying, but we should keep in mind that we are a regional school. So if infections uh do occur, and my, of course, my earnest hope would be that they wouldn't at Maggie Walker, but if they were to occur and spread throughout our student population or through our, our staff, and those, those students would be dispersing throughout the region, and that could uh cause greater spread um than even we see with, at, at some of our other schools. Um, so those are some of the, the thoughts that uh, that we've considered as a board. Um, and, and our last discussion related to reopening of the governor's schools and, and other specialty programs, wanted to make sure that everyone here understood where, where we are particularly, given the number of students uh that we have at Maggie Walker.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barlow. Anyone else have a comment? And then I have a question.
Um, I'll just say, we're very small, and uh we are now hybrid, so we are, we've done that since um right after Labor Day. We're being very successful with it. But we are also very small. I mean, our whole school probably is like one grade level at some of the larger schools. Um, and we don't have the number of students, so the transportation would be a problem. However, I have not had any concerns from our students who are virtual that they're having any problems with connectivity or whatever. So we're sort of in a position we could do either. So I'm willing to do, you know, whatever the majority feels like is the best thing to do.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And Mr. Axel?
Yeah, we, as you well know, we're, we're hybrid. And as mentioned earlier, and thank you, Mr. Barlow for recalling that. We gave the option to our parents. And we have roughly 17,000 children. And of that, 11,000 roughly chose face-to-face and 6,000 chose virtual.
About 10, 10, 3, 10,300 face-to-face, 6, 6,500 virtual.
Close enough. You, you have, you, you can see where you had both. And it's working quite well. And we have had some COVID cases. We've only had, I believe, one death. And that was the transportation guy, but that was maybe not. Okay, sorry. I'm looking at him. He's saying no. We've had maybe, how many total cases have we had? Take your mic, turn your mic off. Let me turn the mic on. Mike.
Sorry, I was having problems. Since the first day of school, combined adults and students, there have been 26.
And most of those were adults, were they not?
There were more adults than students. I don't have the breakdown in front of me right now of the 26. Exactly how much of each, but the, the 26 is a combined number of, of adults and students.
Okay. But the reason I'm saying that, that, that's a population of, of, you know, 17,000 roughly. And you, we've had 26. And so we've considered it successful. And I'm going to go back to why we considered it successful because the community considered it successful because they got to choose. And the people that are going virtual are happy. The people that are going face-to-face are happy. In fact, now we're getting emails, if I may share this, Dr. Gill, we're getting emails from people who are virtual, wanting to go back, wanting to go to face-to-face before the end of the semester. So we'll begin to see a shift from folks going back to face-to-face, just sharing what our, our community is doing. We had technological challenges out of County, very long county. And in my beloved Beaverton district, which is the most beautiful district in the county. It's also the most rural district in the county where you, we don't have Comcast. We don't have, I mean, you have, I mean, it was, we have hotspots that we provided for kids that didn't have Wi-Fi connections. And I'd like to thank, when we did this last, on Tuesday night, the Head of Education Foundation purchased a number of, of hotspots that we've placed around the county. Please get it anyway. I'm getting long with it. Forgive me. It has been, it has been good for us. There have been major challenges. Dr. Gill could probably go on for four hours. And I'm going to brag on our folks. Dr. Gill and his team have done a fantastic job of meeting those challenges. And they're not, they're not small. But, but they met them and they did, they did very well. We're still having transportation. Dr. Mr. Barlow said, there's transportation issues because everybody's doing double runs and things such of this nature. But I think they can be, the challenges for us to meet. And I think we can meet them. And like you said, Ms. Ogboni, it depends on the division. Some divisions address them different than other divisions.
Right.
We, we've, we've been able to do it to the satisfaction of our community, I would say it that way. But I think it's successful, but the, but the community is happy with it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Axel.
If I could just for a second, I didn't mean to correct the chairman. Mr. Chairman, you, you were, you were correct. I certainly didn't mean to imply otherwise that there. We did have an employee fatality believed to be linked to COVID. That was not during the school opening. That was back much, many months ago during the school closure period. Not in the school opening period, but did want to make that clear. But, but yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gill. Dr. Lowry, one question I have for you as you consider this. Has there, I'm sure there's been discussion, but if you can't share it with us yet, that's fine. But you have a lot of, of instructors who are teaching a class that there's one section. So how, how would you address the challenge of, let's say, for example, half the students want to come back and half of them want to stay virtual? Is it your thought that when you move toward this, you might do, I, I know obviously a, a hybrid version, but you could have some of the class be virtual at the same time, some of the classes. How would one of your teachers handle that challenge though? That's, I mean, that's one of the big things that bothers me with, you know, having been a teacher, trying to do both at once, I think would be a problem.
It, it is. Here's, here's our situation. And we had a very good discussion this morning with the superintendent's on this topic. One of the things that we would have to do, if we were to try to, I'm just going to, this is, this is absolutely hypothetical. So I want to be real clear on this.
Sure.
To any parents or, or other folks that are listening in. If we were to make the decision, let's say, we were going to bring the students back at the end of the first semester, let's just say we were going to do this in February. We would have to give students the option if they did not want to come back to remain virtual. We would then have to go ahead and individually by student figure out what classes each one of them had. And if we had enough of them, and I'm thinking particularly in the ninth and 10th grade levels. If we had enough of them, say, that wanted to remain virtual to be able to peel off a section from a teacher where they might be teaching, and I, I mean, again, if there are any teachers on here, I'm saying this hypothetically, you know, they might be teaching four classes with kids in front of them in one class virtually or something like that. That would be a better situation than the hybrid model of teaching kids in front of you and teaching a laptop that's got five kids on Zoom. And unfortunately, with the singletons, which are, which are quite a few of those in the upper levels, there is no other option. You know, well, there are, I'll take that back. There, there are options, but they present equity issues. Where you're essentially now almost doing, well, your work is up in Schoology, just download it, do it, resubmit it.
Right.
But the option of them participating live in class is very taxing and challenging to the teacher. I've got family members of mine that are teachers in, in some of your districts. And those that are doing that are, they're really struggling. And you end up kind of doing both halfway versus one or the other very well. But I will say, to answer your question of, you know, how would your teachers deal with it? They would deal with, deal with it with, with grace and dignity, and we would figure out a way to make it work. It's just not an ideal situation. None of this is ideal for anybody. I mean, let's just be honest, but we would do everything we could to try to tease out as many sections that could be completely virtual and not split between the two, if that was at all possible. But when we talked this morning, I'm going to send a survey out to our families in the not-too-distant future, sort of asking that question so that we could begin to prepare to, to create essentially a master schedule. Sort of a, a dual master schedule or parallel master schedule. It's going to require an enormous amount of work, but if that's what we have to do, then that's what we do. If that helps with the teachers a little bit, it's not an ideal situation. You know, that's, it's certainly not. Dr. Pennykov has her hand up in the chat. I don't know if that's an old hand or if that's a current hand. And if it's an old hand, I can lower it for her. All right, it has been lowered. Just want to make sure we weren't missing anybody.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? If not, well, Dr. Lowry will just bring us up to date as, as things progress. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Dr. Lowry, I'm curious to know whether, whether you've had the, the chance to sort of pull the staff and students to get a.
We did. It was back in August though, so I think the data is stale. We're at a different point right now with, with the pandemic, you know, for good or for bad, depending upon where you live. But when we did it in August, about 70% of our students were comfortable coming back to school. About 30% were not at that time. And for the faculty and staff, it was kind of inverted. About 70% were not comfortable coming back at that time. And about 30% were. And it was a Likert scale that was like, you know, extremely uncomfortable, uncomfortable and neutral. So, so when I say, you know, the ends, the ends on both sides, there weren't a lot in those end pieces. But if you kind of split it down the middle, that's kind of where we were. But again, this was in early August, while all of these, all the folks on this call were in the process of making their decision. So I would, I don't have fresh data.
Gotcha.
And I will get fresh data before we make any kind of a decision.
Great, great. And I know it's not a huge data set, but I have heard from a couple of staff members at Maggie Walker expressing opinions. So definitely would like to, to hear more about that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair. So, so just to be clear, so I can sort of report back to, to my board and administration, we're, we're going to be taking a closer look at when the return for in-person a little later down the line.
Yeah, I do not anticipate making any decisions that would affect anything within the next, with, with the near future. There are too many variables for us to work through right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lowry. I'm going to veer from the agenda just for a brief moment. Dr. Cashwell has a meeting at 11:00. So Dr. Cashwell, I'm going to get, ask you to go ahead and give your superintendent's report, and then you'll be able to leave for your 11 o'clock, and then we'll let Dr. Lowry give his information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many of the items we discussed in the Superintendent Steering Committee have already been addressed here, but just to summarize, we spent some time talking about reopening challenges that we were just discussing. Dr. Lowry's challenge of realizing that each sending school division's operating on some sort of a different model. And so ultimately, what does that mean for Maggie Walker, particularly in regards to transportation? And he shared his desire to go ahead and get some updated information from his staff and, and community via survey and that we would, we certainly committed as sending school divisions to keep the lines of communication open as we're changing models across the districts to make sure he has that up-to-date information. We just briefly talked about the budget picture with consensus mostly being that there are a lot of question marks there, I think, for everyone. We also had some discussion broadly around the planning committee's discussion. He updated us related to their discussion around admission practices. Looking both specifically at this upcoming cycle related to some of the pandemic constraints related to test administration, and then that sort of future look that the planning committee's taking as to whether the traditional assessment would continue to play a part, and if, if not, what are other indicators that may surface? So he updated us on that work. He also updated us and provided an opportunity to hear related to the governor's equity committees update there and how that may in some way impact Maggie Walker in the future. And, and still, everything's preliminary. There are no decisions that will have direct impact. And that covers all of our discussion items from the Superintendent Steering Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Are there any questions for Dr. Cashwell about the student, about the Superintendent Steering Committee? Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Lowry, you want to proceed along with your information?
Yeah, this is pretty quick. This won't take long at all. The Finance Committee did meet on October 1st, and the, that information is available at that link. We had an excellent, excellent webinar last night being put on by our school counseling department and our school psychologist on helping adolescents cope during COVID-19.
It's Ogboni having trouble hearing him.
I'm sorry. Does it help if I get a little closer? Is this better?
That's better.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
I will get up on this microphone a little bit. We had an excellent counseling webinar last night entitled Helping Adolescents Cope During COVID-19. It was put on by our school counseling department and our school psychologist. It was largely attended by freshman parents. But it was a really good service that we were able to provide our community. We did have the first day of junior PSAT testing yesterday. The next one is next Thursday. Our, and we had no problems being able to give the test with half of our juniors on campus spread out around, to be able to get that done. It was about, about 90 kids on campus, I guess, total. The debate team is competing in a virtual tournament. I know that our Model Congress and our Model UN groups are also competing in virtual events coming up. So some of those things are still progressing even in during the lockdown, so to speak. Our, our Dragons, our spa, our Mech Tech Robotics Team is sponsoring a virtual STEM event on the 24th. And we were also very proud that our, one of our history teachers, Mr. Dan Brown, is an REB finalist this year, which is really cool. So it's nice to see his work being recognized on that level because he's certainly well-deserving. And that's just the information that I had. The Superintendent Steering Committee report was given, and there is no need for a closed meeting. So I will turn things back to you, Madam Chair, if there's any questions or such, and then you can do any announcements you have.
Okay. Thank you very much. The, any questions for Dr. Lowry on any of those items? Okay, our, I will announce it's not there. Ms. Marshall, if you could, if you have it in front of you, oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Our next meeting is an executive board meeting, and that is on November the 12th. And just as a reminder, the superintendents do not meet on that day that, that we have just an executive board meeting. Is there any other business or any announcements from anyone on the call? Okay, hearing none. I, I will declare our meeting adjourned.